Good evening. Welcome to this special meeting of the Mayor and City Council on Monday, November 4th. I'll call this meeting to order at 5:00 PM. Agenda item number two, ordinance number 2035, an ordinance amending the general operating budget and capital improvement program of the Marion City Council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, and to provide an effective date. Director Saylor, you have the floor.
So, this is our third amendment to FY 2025. All the changes are centered around page three in the capital improvement program. And these changes are based on projects that have ARPA funding. And we need to have the projects nailed down by December 31st of this year because all funds have to be encumbered by then. We've had some issues where the engineers haven't given us the specs for Morton Place and Stanley Place, so we won't have final amounts on those projects. So, Mr. Miller has some shovel-ready projects that we're proposing to move those funds to, that we can make those encumbrances by the end of the calendar year. The other portion is for the emergency rescue vehicle, to add $35,000 to that. Since the time that we prepared the budget in the February-March timeframe, the price has now increased. Those funds, the original funds that were budgeted for the vehicle, as well as the additional funds, are all coming from Speed Camera funding. So, it's overall just a net increase to the CIP of $35,000, $35. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions from the council? I'll start at the end with Mr. Simmons.
Just a thank you. I did send some questions in advance, and thank you for getting back. That makes sense that we're just having to shift these lines. It'd be a greater-than-normal variance, but because we're having to just move it to different projects for shovel-ready, I think there's one file you're getting me, so I'll look forward to seeing that, but thank you so much for your work.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Ms. Johnson, any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Mills?
No questions.
And Ms. Clark?
No questions.
If everyone is in agreement, this will remain on the agenda for tonight's council meeting at 6:00 PM. Agenda item number three, purchase requisition, curbside composting supplies. Sustainability Manager, Michelle Blair, you have the floor. Can you just push the button? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I'm presenting tonight the request to purchase curbside composting carts, kitchen countertop containers, RFID tags, and compostable bags. These purchases are for the residents that are currently not part of the city's curbside organics recycling program, and will allow them to participate in the program prior to ordinance 2010, effective date of July 2025. As referred to in the memo, the plan is to provide composting kits to all single-family and townhome communities. The kit consists of outdoor cart, kitchen countertop containers, and a starter set of compostable bags. The large order is sourced out to a variety of vendors. Rayburg Pacific will provide the 35-gallon outdoor cart with the locking lid and the RFID tags. The RFID tags will be placed on the smaller outdoor carts to make them compatible with the service verification system and the inventory system currently in place. The smaller carts provided by Orbis will be deployed to the townhome communities in consideration of ease of use for residents, ones in the middle units, and HOA bylaws requiring carts to be moved to the back of the property after collection. Residents will be able to trade up for the larger carts upon request and vice versa. Kitchen countertops are part of the kit and will be delivered along with the outdoor cart and the starter set of compostable bags. The deployment is citywide, and these purchases will cover existing households and are currently participating in the curbside organics recycling program. We have started the deployment on the south side of the city. Laurel Ridge, County Crossing, Laurel Cove, along with Wellington 1, 2, and 7 have already received, have been completed, and we will need additional carts to continue. It is requested that the city council consider this one-time purchase of 35-gallon Rayburg Pacific outdoor carts, RFID tags, 12-gallon outdoor carts, and 1.85 kitchen countertop containers from Orbis, and compostable bags, for a total of $306,610.
Thank you, Ms. Blair. Are there any questions from the council?
I don't have a question, Mr. Simmons.
Go ahead, Mr. Mills.
Good evening, Ms. Blair, and everyone else. You had said that it's a one-time fee. Like, do you plan on, like, purchasing extra? Because things happen.
So, this will give us a little, this will give us some wiggle room, but as we have done with the refuse and recycling carts, we include it in the GOB on a yearly basis for carts that are damaged or for new residents who may not have a cart, and for new developments. So, we capture that in the GOB. So, this is just kind of the deployment citywide, which is, we will not make this type of deployment again.
Okay. All right. And also, the, with it being leaf season right now, can constituents put the compost and leaves inside?
We want that, yes, absolutely. What we suggest is to take the leaf bags, put them in the 35, and just throw everything in there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Additional questions from the council? Mr. Simmons?
Yes, and thank you also for replying back. It was very helpful, the answers you sent by email. For the rollout schedule, I know, as you mentioned, we've already got some communities hit the ground running for the, for this remaining, you know, whatever it is, another 5,000 or so, or 7,000. What sort of, can the rest of the city look for when those are going to start being fully?
So, we are currently, we updated our website, so if you go into our website, well, you'll, you can see, I'm working with IT. You can see which communities we'll start next with, but we're going to focus on single-family homes until the smaller carts come in. The kits are ready. We put together the educational information. Public Works ties them in a compostable bag to the lid, and then they're deployed. So, our next set, as soon as, as soon as I can release it, obviously with council approval, we can roll that out before the end of this month.
Gotcha. And then this order will hit us by a month? I don't know what's the turnaround on that order, given approval? We have this in another month or two, 7,000 trash cans, or?
Well, so, we're going to have a rolling rollout, so, because we don't have space for 7,000 all at once. So, what Rayburg has done and Orbis has done is because I have said that our plan is to order a large amount, they have reduced the unit cost
Gotcha.
to accommodate that, but they're going to hold it. And then, as we can accommodate, so we're looking at, you know, getting 1,000 a month, so that's a truck, a truck of 35 is 1,080 carts. And so, then, Public Works will be able to roll those out.
Is your thought, just in case folks ask, like, April-ish May, how will we have hit most people for ones that they're going to get?
Yes. Our goal, I think, is two, I'm looking at two, because we've got, we've had different, but yes, definitely by June of 2025, I think we anticipate every, every resident will have a cart.
Yes, that is correct. It has to be implemented by July 1st, 2025, and we would hope to, at some point, start to roll out 500 to 800 a month and get all those out to this residence. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. President. Thank you, Mr. Simmons and Director Miller. Any other questions? Ms. Johnson?
Just a couple, and thank you, Michelle. I feel like you have a hard job getting all this together, sharing the information with us. Glad that Adrian mentioned about where would they be housed, but as far as rollout, so the smaller ones will go to the, you know, townhomes. So, you already have those mapped out, where they're going to go, and what size they'll get. Now, do we currently have any in supply now, or we're getting all fresh? Okay. I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Ms. Blair, can you check the mic? I think the light's off. There it goes.
Sorry.
When the light's on, it's on.
Okay. When it's red, it's on?
Yeah. It's backwards. Any additional questions on the purchase requisition? Any opposition? If not, this agenda item will remain on the 6:00 PM agenda. Thank you, Ms. Blair. Agenda item number four, bid recommendation, municipal phone system upgrade. Department of Information and Technology Director James Cornwall Schill, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Cole, and esteemed council members. Before you, as a bid recommendation for the upgrade of the core software of our citywide telephone system. The Avaya Aura Voice-over IP phone system is a critical piece of the city's concurrent communications technology stack. It drives the internal inbound and outbound routing of calls between the world at large and every internal extension at the municipal center, police department, public works, pools, community centers, multi-service center, and everywhere else. It supports both emergency and non-emergency lines, integrates with emergency line recording, voicemail, and E911 systems, and it provides the automated attendant capabilities that are currently in use at the multi-service center and community centers. The city previously upgraded the Avaya software in 2017 and 2021, moving to versions R7 and R8 respectively. The R8 version is now end of life, and in order to expand our system further, to purchase more extension licenses, to provide security and functionality updates, and other services, we must again upgrade to Aura R10, the latest version of the platform. Notably, they skipped version R9, that's why we didn't go R7, R8, R9, R10. Aside from providing continued support to the phone system, the R10 upgrade does include important improvements that will lighten the load on the city's network and server infrastructure and reduce our environmental impact. Work on Avaya systems must be performed by Avaya-certified vendors. Our vendor is Converge One of Minneapolis, Minnesota. Converge One has served the city's phone system maintenance and support needs for over a decade and has an excellent record of service with the city. I do apologize, left out of the memo before you, that Converge One is a master contractor on the State of Maryland PBX telecommunications equipment and services master contract, number And as such, we are requesting sole source authorization on this project. Funding for the project is provided in the adopted FY 2025 capital improvement plan in the amount of $58,657. It is recommended that the Mayor and City Council award Converge One of Minneapolis, Minnesota, a $58,657 contract for the software upgrade of our Avaya phone system in accordance with the State of Maryland PBX telecommunications equipment and service master contract that I mentioned a moment ago. Thank you, and I'm happy to address any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director. Any questions from the council? Mr. Simmons?
No, again, I just wanted to say thank you, and just to share with folks too, it was good to learn through our correspondence that the new software actually, if anything, will have less of a load on the current hardware level, so, which is great, so it increased efficiency for the internal system, so, thank you.
Any additional questions? Ms. Johnson?
So, I know, I think you just mentioned, but I don't think it was written on here, this does include the Gooody Mansion?
Yes.
Okay. And does the price include any contingency funds?
No, this is straight professional services. It is as stated and all-encompassing of the services provided.
And does it include any training of anything for, like, IT, or if there's any type of support included?
The support and training are included in our annual renewal, our annual licensing fees.
Okay.
So, not in this particular contract.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mills?
One question. Is there any, any company, like, any reason why we're using a company from Minnesota? It's nothing local.
So, we used to use a company that was based, I believe, in Beltsville. They no longer exist. So, we, the State of Maryland maintains a list of licensed contractors that are authorized to work in the State of Maryland for specific purposes, and we utilized a company off of that list, and we've been very happy with them. There are not a lot of Avaya-licensed companies out there, and we do periodically look at the list and look for people local, but we haven't had anybody pop up.
Okay. T-Mobile?
They don't work on Avaya systems. Now, that said, we are, we are periodically evaluating other platforms to move to. Right now, the Avaya system is what we are sticking with, but the guarantee of support updates for R10 lasts, the stated warranty says that we get updates for that package for the next five years at least. So, as we approach that five-year time, we will be evaluating other, other platforms, potential moves to cloud systems instead of on-premise systems, you know, weighing and balancing all of the pros and cons there.
Okay. So, is it like fiber optics or something like that, or?
So, this is dealing with, it utilizes our existing network, so fiber and Ethernet, and it runs through two co-located core servers, and all of our other, all of our father, all of our other facilities talk to those servers.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mills. Ms. Clark?
Just one question. I saw on the documentation that you wanted to switch over to receive security updates and bug fixes. Do you mind just sharing what the difference will be from the current system that we have and the security measures that will be with the new system?
Sure. So, without going too technically in-depth, any piece of software, any server setup has vulnerabilities that come out over time. People discover that a new attack can exploit some missing piece of code in the system. So, any system that we purchase has support services, patching, that kind of thing, over time. The R8 system that we are currently using is now end of life and will no longer have those updates, so we have to upgrade in order to get those updates at all.
So, I assume that the security will be enhanced from the older system that we had, just because I think everything is moving towards technology advancements, which means people are getting smarter and hacking easier, so just wondered if that would also increase as well, the security measures?
There are definitely improvements to the base security. I can't go into depth on that at the moment, but there, there are definitely a number of technologies that they've phased out and brought in new, modern replacements to those technologies, including things like our remote worker, our remote worker software that allows us to log into the phone system from home for our teleworkers. That, that platform is increasing in security measures here, which is a particularly high, high vulnerability platform.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. If there's no further questions from council, this item will remain on the agenda for 6:00 PM this evening. Agenda item number five, purchase requisition of an emergency Bearcat vehicle. Laurel Police Department Chief Russ Hamel, you have the floor.
Good evening, President Cole, and esteemed members of our council. Thank you for having us here this evening. Laurel Police Department is requesting permission to purchase a Lenko emergency Bearcat vehicle. This budget request is for the purchase of that vehicle, as approved in our current budget. This is an armored, protected vehicle utilized to safely deploy officers, particularly our emergency response team members into areas where safety may be extremely compromised for officers and the community alike, in order to assist in managing such events to safer conclusions. It is anticipated that the vehicle will enhance safety concerns by providing armored protection for officers executing their responsibilities in particularly vulnerable positions where gunfire and other dangers may result, to include managing armed conflicts, rescuing people in risk of being injured, or that may already be injured, and providing a safer environment for tactical movements utilized in the management of high-risk events. Funding for this purchase has been included in our FY 2025 capital improvement projects with its costs now projected at $271,639, and as Michelle covered earlier, that is a slight increase over where we originally projected due to manufacturing increase in price. The recommendation is that we respectfully request that the Marion City Council approve the proposed purchase of a Lenko emergency Bearcat vehicle at the cost total of $271,639. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Chief. I know this was a, there were a lot of emails about this this week. You and I had spoke earlier. Can you give us a little bit of background of situations where we would need this?
Well, try not to tack, to compromise us tactically in doing so. It's, as I mentioned earlier, there are dynamic situations that occur, even within our community, that would be safer for everybody involved, including citizens, if, with the use of this vehicle. We have the opportunity with this vehicle to do some things we are not able to do right now, frankly. And the vehicle, being the armor-type protection it has with other safety features in it that I've discussed with some of you already, would enable us to, in the unfortunate circumstance that we need to rescue somebody, be able to do that. In some circumstances, we need to move up closer to an area where the danger is particularly high, be able to protect our officers in doing so. For instance, as you recall, we had a barricade here not too long ago, and we moved people out of those locations without the benefit of this type of armored vehicle. If we had this armored vehicle, we could have moved people, in my opinion, and having done this quite a while, in a safer fashion, to a safe location in a quicker fashion. And I, you know, frankly, these, these types of things, you hope and you pray you never need it. You know, I expect the life on this to go 15 to 20 years, and hopefully 15 to 20 years from now, if I'm still around, one of you contacted me and say, hey, we never had to deploy it. Having done this for a long time, unfortunately, I don't think that's the way it's going to play out. But I don't think any of us want to be in a situation where we're later going, we had an opportunity to do things safer. We had an opportunity to keep our community safer, to keep our officers safer. We don't afford ourselves to that capability, that opportunity, at my opinion, at a reasonable cost. In the past, we have had access to such vehicles, but due to certain considerations, a number of years ago, we had to turn them back in from where and whence we got them. And this, this is a unique opportunity at this stage for us to be able to address these concerns and handle these things in a responsible manner, both fiscally and personally responsible.
Thank you, Chief. I'll open it up to the council. Mr. Mills?
I have one quick question for you, Chief. How soon can we get, can we get it?
12 to 18 months is the manufacturer time to be able to get it delivered to us.
Okay. All right. And like, will it be, how does it be delivered?
I'm sorry?
How does it, how does, how do they deliver such a vehicle?
We go up and pick it up and drive it down here, so you can get experience driving it. It's, it's not a highway vehicle.
I know.
So, we're going to do some safety measures with police departments, you know, it's being made at a location outside of Maryland. We're going to do some liaisoning with departments, particularly state police, that will help us move it safely, but you drive it here, which is, it's good, good operational for our officers to be, we'll rotate the drivers on it and get them some experience.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Additional questions?
I just wanted to say thank you for answering the questions that I had and considering some of the things that I shared. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Simmons?
Same, just to say, thank you. I know we had a chance to talk via phone as well, so I appreciate that information and how it informs the judgment we can make here on council.
Thank you. I know we haven't voted yet, but I do appreciate each of you being open to this and having open discussions with us, because there are certain things that are just natural to us, Mark and I, and members of our staff, and I don't think we always realize, not everybody knows these tactical kind of things like we do. And, you know, having, having taken part in too many of these incidences, maybe, maybe you get a little too, too comfortable with it, and it's good that everybody else is uncomfortable with it, that it does cause us some consternation, considering these types of things could happen. So, we appreciate you listening to us and allowing us to address your issues.
Mr. Mills?
Yeah. One quick question just came to mind. Sometimes, like, if you, you know how, like, if you place a car in a certain neighborhood or, you know, in a place, it kind, it's a deterrent? I mean, could that be used as a deterrent, or you just put it in the back?
No, sir. We will, this will be deployed as tactically, as tactical situations dictate to us, but you're talking about the Captain Tuttle vehicles, the old MASH episode where the guy didn't really exist? So, yes, there are, you can put a police car out places, put a dummy in it, not me, like a real dummy. And, and people, oh, look, there's an officer out there. It's really not an officer in there, but that is effective, that actually works. People get angry when we actually put a real officer out there, and they take enforcement action. They're like, wait, I thought the dummy was out there. But those are very efficient for us to help deter traffic considerations, particularly some crime considerations as well. But this type of vehicle, we wouldn't do that.
All right. Thank you.
Any final questions from the council? Hearing no objections, this item will be placed on the 6:00 PM agenda.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item number six, fleet acquisition, TYMC0 435 Street Sweeper. Department of Public Works Director Tim Miller, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Cole, and city council members. The Department of Public Works is requesting approval for the purchase of a TYMC0 435 Street Sweeper. This will be in addition to the fleet to meet the demand of the service with the additional developments coming onboard. It will also give us a spare, which we currently don't have, and our current Street Sweeper has been out of service for the last four weeks. It just came back today. So, this department solicited several quotes, including from vendors and state and county contracts. The accepted quote is from Mid-Atlantic Waste Systems of Easton, Maryland, through the Sourcewell Contract Number 11152TYM. The equipment will help us navigate alleys and narrow roadways efficiently while ensuring compliance with our county's stormwater management pollution plan. The received quotes were from Mid-Atlantic Waste Systems, $234,796. Maryland Industrial Truck, $289,876.55. Funding is available through the adopted fiscal year 2025 CIP Fleet Replacement Project. It's recommended that the purchase of this equipment, for a total cost of $234,796, be awarded to Mid-Atlantic Waste Systems of Easton, Maryland. And if council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Director. Any questions on this bid recommendation? Mr. Simmons?
And thank you again also for your replies. I think if I understood correctly, you know, and we just got the old one back, and this one is like much more nimble and also lets us do additional things, and we were expecting both should run around 24 hours a week each, is that?
No, I believe the, the larger one will probably run 40, I'll say 35 hours a week. And the, the new one, I would hope to utilize, so what we have is, we try to hit each area of the city once, and we have a map that indicates that. And in doing so, we would, I would personally like to hit Main Street more than once a week. I think that is, you know, the gateway to the city. I'd just like to see things like that kept clean, okay? And other areas that are high-traffic areas, and, you know, just, the nice thing about this Street Sweeper is, and Councilman Mills, you'll appreciate, it has a 15-and-a-half-foot turning radius versus a 40-foot truck, okay? I'm sorry, a 40-foot turning radius. So- So we can get in closer to those parked cars and things of that nature to pick up the waste. This one also has a, the waste box, when it's filled, will actually lift up off the truck about 10 feet, and then we're able to dump it right into our dumpster. The current one is a rear dump, okay? So where the back of the truck raises, or the, yeah, the truck raises up, it opens a door, just like a trash truck, and out comes the, the filth. And so then we have to load it with another loader into it. So this will make things, cleanup will take 10 minutes versus an hour.
Yeah, and, but in addition, like you said, to being easier to use and sort of more nimble, the other thing is it does let us run more frequently during the week, especially things like Main Street. I know we've gotten some comments, we want to try to keep it as clean as possible, so, and, and get into some hard-to-get spaces to really optimize that, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Any additional questions? Go ahead, Ms. Clark.
I do have one question. In lieu of, I'm just assuming that this is not automated, being run, some people may assume that, that this is an actual individual that's driving this truck.
Yes.
In lieu of some of the situations that have occurred, particularly over the summertime, is there a location in the truck, or can you confirm that there's a location in the truck where the employees can have their beverages and stay hydrated? I know that some residents had some concerns about that, so I just want to reassure them.
Yeah, generally in the sweeper vehicles, there's one, oh, just the operator and everything, the cab is air-conditioned, and it is a regular truck type chassis. It just has the wheels out over the engine, and the operator sits right there where he can basically look down and see what's going on. So there could be room for whatever else is needed in that cab to take care of the operator.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Mr. Mills?
I, I wanted to say he or she, because I remember many years ago, there was a young lady that was driving that, driving that, uh, street sweeper. She was bad, man. I mean, she was bad, because to maneuver that old machine, I, I know, to, to maneuver it, it was, it's, this one is going to be way easier.
Yes, it is.
So like, my, my advice is, you know, when, when you can find the money, try to get to, to back this one up and then disregard the other one.
We'll, we'll consider that in a couple of years. I think we'll be set with two, and with the other, you know, the other developments coming on, the West Side and Overlook and Tux and Greens, those aren't currently mapped for us, okay? In, in an area when we would pick up leaves, things of that nature. The other thing about this is it is vacuum. It's not a mechanical sweeper per se, so it will pick up a lot more fines and things like that, sand and dirt and soil, so it really will keep the streets cleaner.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no opposition from council, this agenda item will remain on the 6:00 PM agenda. Our final fleet, fleet acquisition of the work session, street crack sealer. Director Miller, you have the floor again.
President Cole, city council members, the Department of Public Works is requesting approval for the purchase of a Crack Pro 125 Melter applicator. It's been at least three years since the city has owned a piece of equipment like this. The last one became inoperable and other purchases made, became a higher priority. It will be beneficial to seal cracks in the streets to mitigate the need, in some instances, for full asphalt repairs. The Equalist Group is a purchasing cooperative organization that provides contracts competitively bid for the use of public agencies. The accepted quote is from Seal Master of Cockeysville, Maryland through the Equalist Group Contract Number COG 2149D. Funding is available through the adopted physical year 2025 CIP Fleet Replacement Project. The cost for this equipment is $82,228.91. It's recommended that the purchase of this equipment for a total cost of $82,228.91 be awarded to Seal Master of Cockeysville, Maryland.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions or comments from the council?
One quick question, sir.
Mr. Mills?
On, on this crack sealer, like, can you just kind of explain it? This, this one I'm not really familiar with.
Sure.
I, I did see a vehicle, it's a vehicle, correct, that, it was another country, but it, it would pick up, it would, it would mill, go through it, go through a, some type of system inside the truck, heat it up, and like have that, what do you call it, the tack into it? And then lay it down again.
Yeah.
Is this something?
No, it's not. But just to, just to let you know, okay? What this does is, in the past, we would have a pickup truck pulling an air compressor, okay? So you had a person driving it, a person on the back with an air hose, and that person blows out the cracks. And a lot of the cracks you'll see are typically where the yellow line is, okay? And they, that is where the two joints of the asphalt passes took place. They'd make one down, they turn around, they come back, and that joint ends up in the middle of the road, okay? We find a lot of times that opens up, okay? And what it does is it allows moisture in. Once you get moisture in, what happens during the winter, that crack tends to get even bigger, okay? So what this machine will allow us to do is to seal that. So in the past, we had the truck pulling an air compressor, they cleaned it all out. Then we had what was, people may be familiar with a tar kettle that's used on a roof, okay? And our employees would go over, turn a spout, fill these little, I'll call them pitchers, full of hot tar, and they would manually walk down that crack and fill the crack. This system, it comes out of the kettle, it's pumped out of the kettle, and it's a one-person operation where that person just has to pull what I'll refer to as like a shoe or a wedge, and it's, you know, puts the tar out or the sealant, and you just slide that down, right down the crack, and it feels that you go as fast as it takes. I mean, we had it demonstrated, and they probably did 25 feet in a matter of a minute. So it rolls much faster, it's much safer. In the past, I was told that our tar kettle would catch on fire because of the different things that you had to put in to keep it pliable. It would get overheated sometimes, or they would heat it too fast, and this is just a lot more modern way to do it, with the air compressor in the front of this trailer. So the person just has to walk it along in front of the car, and then there's a 15-foot hose in the back so that they can get whatever cracks they need to get right and left.
Now, with that, with that process, is there like some type of continuator in the back? I mean, how do we keep that person that's out of the vehicle, that's filling the cracks, safe?
Well, okay, what we always do is that, that vehicle has a trail vehicle, okay? And it will have someone who might be on there with another person, depending upon how fast we do it. You can sometimes throw down a little sand, and it makes the tack firm up, but we would always have a, another pickup track pulling possibly a billboard, you know, with an arrow behind it, always. Yep, when our guys are working in the street.
I think we should invest in a continuator. Just, I've been in the road, I fell through bridges, I've been in sinkholes, all that, and, and I know what it is, seeing people, you know.
Yeah. Well, just to give you an idea, I know that, I, I've seen it more, PennDOT and Maryland State Highway do it. They will mill out that strip, and they go in with a two-foot-wide milling machine, okay? Based on pricing that we have and get for our projects, I went ahead and worked it up. It's about a dollar a lineal foot to mill it out, two feet wide, okay? And then you have to come back and fill that patch. That's about $4 or $5 a lineal foot. So now you're up to six, say $6, and you have to repaint the, the yellow line now, okay? So that's an additional cost. What happens is by using this crack sealer, you're talking, depending upon the depth of the crack, the width of the crack, anywhere from 35 cents to maybe a dollar. I mean, that would be a deep gouge in the street. So it's, you can see that it's probably five times, six times less expensive, and it'll last just as long.
I understand that, but that's not what I'm talking about.
Okay.
I'm talking about to have that person that's, 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 that's out of a vehicle, behind the vehicle, and then you have an aero board behind that person that's out of the vehicle, that's in the lane, that's applying the seal coat. I'm fine with that part, but, but the part, what I'm trying to do is protect that individual that's out on the road with just a vest on, you know, a neon vest on. So what I'm saying is, that, besides having the aero board, there are continuators, you know, long-stretched-out continuators.
Oh, yes.
That have an aero board on it.
Yes.
But it's like a 12-foot-long continuator that if somebody runs in the back.
Of that pickup truck.
Of that pickup truck.
It absorbs the hit.
Yeah, because, I mean, an aero board is not going to protect nobody.
No, no.
You know?
I agree.
And so like, just for future, you know, I, I would say that we should try to have a continuator.
That has come up, and, and we will consider that in, in the coming years, for sure. It was discussed.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Any additional questions from the council? Mr. Simmons?
Sorry, just a quick note to add on it. From, from the perspective of purchasing this thing, I think you said it gets like another two to five years sort of out of that street before we have to do, you know, sort of re-milling that whole road and repaving that. So, you know, it's an investment in that sense of elongating the life of that road. Yep.
Yes, it is, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Any additional questions? Hearing no opposition, this agenda item will be placed on the 6:00 PM agenda as well.
Thank you.
Our final agenda item of the work session, Resolution Number 4-2024, a resolution of the Laurel City Council to approve the rewrite of the council's standing rules. I am happy to introduce this legislation. Most of us up here are new. We have not been up here more than five years individually. As we came through the council, the last rewrite of the council rules was in 2020. Since then, we've had a pandemic, we've gone to virtual meetings, a lot of things that govern the council were saved in multiple documents in many different places, and as new council members, it's often hard to know, well, how do I exactly do this? Where is that? How do you know where it is? What the aim of this document is to do is to clean up all of those questions. It combines a lot of documents that were separate into one place for new council members that might be inexperienced. It also brings in a lot of Robert's Rules of Order. A lot of the old legislation said that when there was a question, it would default to Robert's Rules of Order. If you're new and haven't memorized Robert's Rules of Order, it's a very boring read. This brings it in so that it's all in one place. It's a very large document, but it does take care of a lot of the things that have come before this particular council, including how to fill a vacancy on a council, public comment period, virtual meetings, when does a meeting go from in-person to, or from virtual to in-person? The goal of this was just to clean everything up and make it easier for everyone up here. With that, I would like to turn it over to legal counsel. Ms. Anderson, could you please give us your review of this?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Good.
Okay. Sorry about that. Good evening, President Cole and members of the council. I wanted to let you know that I did review the standing rules for compliance with the city charter as well as applicable state law requirements, and found that the rules to be legally sufficient from that perspective. I also reviewed the rules from the perspective of good procedure as well as good governance, and I found that the rules were sound. One of the things that is always helpful is that if you have one place, as the president just mentioned, to go and look at the rules, and it is also very helpful if a body has rules that govern its conduct. And I found that the, the rules were contained in this way. It also provides information to the public as to certain procedural requirements that are happening, and I also found that very helpful, and it's good for the body as well as the community.
Thank you very much. I did want to add that everyone up here has had a chance to review the rules. There were many, many additions and changes, so that everybody has had input in this. It wasn't just me. Our clerk has spent many, many hours on this, renumbering it, changing where the rules go, so I want to thank everybody on that. With that, I would like to open the floor to discussion. Mr. Simmons, I know you had sent me a note that you wanted to make a few comments. I'll start with you.
Yes, and I have read them through a couple of times, and comprehensive, but hopefully also helpful to the conduct of the council's business. A couple other items we've chatted about, maybe for consideration as some, some edits around the member debate section on saying, okay, there may be additional rounds of discussion that the president may deem warranted or helpful to the conversation, and so providing the president with the ability to extend pass two rounds is provided in the document. Also, one about people who may share their address during presentation, and perhaps providing some alternate ways to not have to do necessarily the house number, just from some privacy or safety concerns, but maybe the street instead. But certainly want to know that folks are within the city. And then two other, oh, maybe two other items to share for the public in here. One, the, the public has a sort of a three-minute time, which is an increase from current, so that, you know, hopefully is well-received. And similarly, members of the public, there are five or more folks who are present in a meeting, they can sort of say, okay, we're here as a group, and we want to designate a member from our group to speak for a longer period of time, for a five-minute time period. So just an update for members of the public who may want to be aware of that. Lastly, the, the two items that we talked about and we're maybe looking at is the rules as they apply to in-person versus virtual, since we do some of both, and in my mind, trying to make consonant both the signup period or also if there's ever disruption either by members or the public. So I know there's some things we're looking at there perhaps for a future date.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Ms. Johnson, any comments or questions?
No, no questions, but I thank you for the opportunity to review it, so gave us a chance to look at it, and glad that you reviewed it and accepted our suggestions.
Thank you. Mr. Mills?
Yeah, I think it was a great idea to have Ms. Anderson go, you know, review this. So it, I was kind of leaning, kind of on the fence with it, but, you know, with the explanation that Ms. Anderson had, because at first I thought like, you know, what was the purpose of doing it? And then, I mean, us talking and then, you know, understanding why it needed to be done is more so like an upgrade. And the, so I, you know, with the explanation for tonight, that, that was pretty helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Clark?
We've spoken about the rules and the changes. First, thank you so much, because I know this took a lot of your time. So thank you for just reading through them. Thank you for looking through the, the rules and trying to implement them in a, a better way, providing, you know, new council members with the ability to understand more. There are a lot of things in here that I do think are great additions, great changes. There are also some that I think need to be fleshed out a little bit more and perhaps introduced at a later time. And we've talked about this as well via email and telephone, but I, I do agree with some of the changes in here, just not all, but thank you so much for this.
You're welcome.
I do have one other thing.
Go ahead, Mr. Mills.
I, I remember Ms. Green actually working on this, and we, and there were some, we had to reference Robert rules. We were in the, looking at Robert's rules, trying to find some situations, and, and then it, and then it just kind of made me thought, think that, dang, this is something, you know, this, all of this extra work that she has to do, I mean, you know, we got a I mean, you know, we got to really say, you know, we appreciate you, you know, really appreciate you, because you here late nights and, I mean, good grief. You maybe don't, I give you a puppy. You need a puppy. I give you a puppy. That's what you need.
I'll make some additional comments on the rules. One of the things that is also added in here is how to introduce and pass legislation. That wasn't really clear on the previous rules of how do I actually create a bill and introduce it? So that has been added here as well. The other part of this, this is a living document. So while this is a resolution, it does give us the ability in this version of the rules to make small tweaks and changes. So if we adopt it in one form and we find something's not working, we can go through and change this without having to do a full resolution rewrite, where the previous rules did not allow for that. So we can, we can amend that, that is included in here, that we can amend the rules by simple motion. We do not have to go through a resolution and a full legislative review. So this does make it a living document. Any additional questions or comments? Is there any opposition to adding this to the six P M. Agenda? Hearing none, it will remain there. I have, the time is five fifty. We will take a, a small break and then reconvene for our six o'clock work session, or a council meeting. Thank you.